That I've seen in other sessions, so good to see you again. We are here this evening for our South Mecklenburg High School reopen strong town hall meeting. So first of all, I simply want to say thanks to all of our families who have made a commitment to join us this evening. This is the last session that we have for our town hall meeting. And so we will do our very best to be sure that you have all the information that you need in order to make very intentional decisions as we think about the upcoming school year. As we want to start off with just acknowledging that while we engaged in conversations, either verbal or via email with our families prior to today, so that will be both the spring and the summer. We heard very, very loud and clear two things that you wanted us to focus on as we went into the upcoming school year. The first was that you wanted us to prioritize safety. The second is that you wanted for us to maximize own learning. And those two areas were regardless of we were in a remote fashion here at South Meck with students at home, or if all of our students were in fact in school. And so what you see on your screen today is that same statement that says we are committed to ensuring that we have very high expectations. And today is yet another effort for us to prove to you that we are really here to be collaborative and transparent and give you everything that we may have. Throughout the session today, we are on Zoom, but we are not using the Zoom feature for chat. We will in fact, once we go through our slides, provide you with a link in the chat where you can go on and actually list any questions that you may have. We have staff here who will actually call out those questions, at which point I will do my best to answer them. But we ask that you not list questions in the chat, that you have an opportunity to list those in the bitly link that will in fact be in the chat feature. There are a couple of documents that we will reference and we will be sure at that time to also put the link to those where you can see them on your own. Last but surely not least, our session today is being recorded. And so if in fact you have neighbors or friends or others who have students here at South Meck, we will be posting all the recordings tomorrow in addition to our frequently asked questions. So that anyone who did not have an opportunity to listen in to our town hall meetings will have an opportunity to do so at their leisure. So as we go into our session today, it is extremely critical that we all are aware of where we are. We are moving from a narrowed focus. As we think about all of you as families, you want to know the details, right? Like that fly on the left hand side, you want to know every single dot on that fly, what it stands for, what it represents. Whereas two weeks ago, we were in the space of the photo that you see on the right, which is the tree and an open land. And so today is hopefully an effort for us to kind of bring us in the middle where we have that fly up close and personal. And we had that tree in the land to now let's come to the happy medium middle where we have that fly on a leaf, which obviously we didn't see represented in either of the two photos. So if you can just walk us, walk with us down this path to provide you with as much information as we have at this point, that will be helpful. So as we go into today, it's important for us to know our agenda is simply an opportunity for us to share with you who's who itself. For us to obviously walk you through the Plan B plus remote model versus the full remote academy. To talk about some of our instructional expectations, our health and safety plans, and then give you an opportunity to ask us any questions. It is critical that all of our families are aware that this presentation is designed for you and for us at South Meck. And so the information gathered is only applicable to South Meck. You may hear us say some things that may not be the same for students in schools across other high schools and or across other elementary or middle schools based on how we in fact plan to roll out the expectation shared from the district because we have been very thoughtful and we want to be sure that what we are doing is what's best for our students. While at the same time, once that point comes, we will actually call that out and say this may not be the same at another school. Just so that you in fact will know what is normal across all schools versus what is exclusive to we here at South. Don't forget, if any information changes from our school system district leaders and or the CDC or other local agencies, then obviously we'll have to change because they had to change. So who's who itself, our families, our students do an amazing job. If you ever have a question, you just email me directly. My cell phone number is always on my email and so typically families will even call me or text me. But I'll just want to remind us that yes, we do have 251 staff members on our campus. And you can very easily reach out as well to any of our assistant principals or our school counselors directly. Should you have a question and you would like to have additional information directly from the source. We have structured our team such that they are providing support to our students based on the student's last name. And so on social media, Twitter, Facebook and Instagram, in addition to what you see on this screen, you do have an opportunity to reach out directly to those staff persons and make contact with them. Keeping in mind, my door is always open and you can always continue to email me. And if I can't provide assistance, I will directly to the respective staff person who can. On these charts though, you do see which staff members are bilingual in Spanish. In addition to, we have a new school counselor who is a sign language interpreter, who will be able to provide support to our families who need that service. In addition to a school counselor who is bilingual, and that is the first time we've had both of those opportunities and we're excited about that. So as we think about Plan B plus remote, we know that our CMS Board of Education approved Plan B plus remote as the model that will be executed in all schools in CMS. It is very critical to know and understand that Plan B plus remote is for CMS. Students who are in Plan B plus remote are all students who are enrolled at South Meck. You do not have to opt into this model, you don't have to sign up for this model. This is school as normal Plan B plus remote. What this means though is, is the first two weeks, students will have an onboarding opportunity where they will be broken up into thirds. So one third of our students will attend school on August the 17th, 18th and 19th in Cohort A. The next one third of our students will attend school on August the 20th, the 21st, the 24th and the 25th in Cohort B. And then the next group of our third will attend school on August 26th, 27th and the 28th. Again, CMS, the school district have broken those students up into thirds. That's not something that we did here at the school. And it truly is random. And so it's not based on your grade, it's not based on your last name, it's not based on your zip code. In an effort to ensure that we do have students across all platforms that will be included in schools in a very third mini fashion. What we do know though, is that students will in fact attend school based on the exact same siblings or exact same individuals that are in their household. So if you have a sibling or you have a cousin or friend who lives in your house, regardless if they're in third grade at Smithfield Elementary, in sixth grade at Quahalo Elementary, or even if they are in ninth grade at Providence, because you are here as a world language magnet student, all of you will be in school at the same time in that cohort. So siblings will be in school at the same time. That's extremely important to note. It also is important to note that because you don't opt into the Plan B plus remote, those students will in fact have an opportunity to be full remote on August the 31st. But should our CMS Board of Education make a decision to move from Plan B plus remote to Plan B, or Plan B plus remote to Plan A, then those students would in fact transition back into school in a face to face model based on whatever decision the school board makes. The next slide talks about Plan B plus remote orientation. It is critical to note, as mentioned on the previous slide, that students who are in Plan B plus remote are expected to attend school the first three days of school if they're in Plan A, the four days that they're in Plan B, or the three days that they're in Plan C. And they will be onboarded, very similar to what we do always, the first few weeks of school anyway. But this year, we have very strategic and intentional areas that we will focus on, some of which are listed on your screen, but for sure, they will include our opportunities for social and emotional learning check ins because we know that some of our students have not engaged in any type of learning opportunity and or any type of social connection with anyone outside of their household since March. And that's a real reality for some who may then sign up to still be in the Plan B plus remote, or not sign up, who will still be in the Plan B plus remote. So that social and emotional connection, that social interaction is going to be critical that we focus on that. It's also going to be critical that we focus on our instructional expectations and procedures. Because we know, and you will learn very soon, life is going to look very different from an instructional perspective for students from March to now. And you'll learn that more in just a few slides, but we're going to really focus on what those expectations are. And then last but not least, we also will ensure that all of our underclassmen students do have an opportunity to take their school yearbook photos on day two of that orientation so that we can go ahead and get that knocked out prior to a later time in the school year. Now, full remote academy is different. This is where you do in fact have to opt in if you want for your student to be enrolled in the full remote academy. And I did forget, failed to mention that this presentation will be available to all families tomorrow. Whenever we share with you the live recordings, we have recorded each of these sessions to yesterday for today. You will get six links tomorrow in the email from me along with this presentation in English and in Spanish, along with the frequently asked questions and we'll be sure that you have all that information tomorrow. But back to this slide, the full remote academy, if you're interested, then you have to opt in. You do in fact have to go to the CMS website and you have to actually sign up. This is not Plan C. Our school district did not approve Plan C as an option for CMS schools, but this is an opportunity where students will be full remote for the first semester. And should you as a parent make a decision that you want to transition out of the full remote academy, you can only do so at the semester break. Or if you're a family who said, I was in Plan B plus remote and now I want to transition to the full remote academy, you can only do that at the semester break. So the transition in and out of the full remote academy can only take place at the semester break at the parent request. Registration does close for this on July the 26th at 11:59 PM. So Mr. Starnes, what is the difference? I really don't understand what the difference is between Plan B plus remote and the full remote academy. So this slide allows for you to actually see the difference. And in a couple of more slides, we'll actually walk you through any additional differences. So under number one, you see Plan B plus remote is where you have said, I want my child to attend school in person when allowed by the Board of Education. If that's you, there's nothing you have to do as I previously mentioned. You will have the in-person orientation. That orientation will be in Group A, Group B or Group C. That is of course over the course of the two weeks. And then if in fact the school board makes a decision as to we're going to shift from Plan B plus remote and we're going to go back to a Plan B, or we're going to go to a Plan A, then it's important to know that based on your not opting into the full remote academy, you will shift with that decision. Under number two, you see the full remote academy. The full remote academy is where you as a parent or a family has said, I want my child to stay at home full time to continue remote learning through the first semester. So that's where you're saying, I do not want them to come to school for the first semester. And that means you do not want them to come for the in-person orientation. If that's you, then you would opt into the full remote academy by registering online on the CMS webpage or simply by going to the bitly which you see on this screen. Don't forget, registration is by July the 26th. And this means that you would not be impacted by a decision by our Board of Education should they make a decision to shift Plan B plus remote at any time throughout the school year to either Plan B or Plan A. If you're that parent or that family who says, I still don't know what I want to do. I want to learn more, which is okay, you still have time. Then that question mark is you, you can simply log on to the CMS website or simply go directly to one of those links. Or you can call the call center, the CMS call center at 980-343-3001 and they can answer questions for you as well. So this visual simply gives you an opportunity just to see the difference between the Plan B plus remote and the full remote academy with the various photos under what you see is track A, which is Cohort A, or track B, which is Cohort B, or track C, which is Cohort C. So now this is where we get lots of smiles and lots of students head to bow. Because our instructional expectations are very different than they were in the spring. I'm going to repeat, our instructional expectations are very different than they were in the spring. We know in the spring, we had a very modified schedule and it didn't start at 7:15 AM. But as you look at this schedule here, you will notice that across all high schools in CMS, we will be expected to follow the same bell schedule for Plan B plus remote and the full remote academy. So yes, that means at 7:15 AM, regardless of your decision, Plan B plus remote or the full remote academy as it stands now, you are expected to engage in learning at 7:15 AM. So that does not mean stay up all night because I have all my classes online. Nope, those days are over, they ended in the spring. We now have school that starts at 7:15 AM for all students. So I'm going to walk you through the differences between this schedule from last year to this year. And I'm going to be sure that you understand the difference between the Plan B plus remote for this schedule and the full remote academy for this schedule. So first, last year, our students could in fact arrive on campus at 6:40 AM. That time has now been shifted up to 6:30 AM. Our staff will be expected to arrive at work earlier this year because based on information provided from the NC Department of Public Instruction, we are expected to have wellness checks each morning for our students and our staff. And we do want to ensure that we have enough time to make that happen. And so students are able to arrive on campus between 6:30 and 7:15 AM to complete their wellness check, to have a grab and go breakfast from the F Building cafeteria. And then they will be expected to report directly to their first block class. In comparison to previous years, where we did allow students to hang out in the mall and hang out on campus until that bell rang, which said now it's time to go to first block. Unfortunately, those opportunities are not available for us. During the Plan B plus remote, students are expected to have the wellness check and then report directly to first block class. We do have grab and go breakfast, for those students who are interested in having grab and go breakfast provided for, for them from us here at South Meck. First block, as I indicated, begins at 7:15 in Plan B plus remote and the full remote schedule. And then we do have a transition of 10 minutes, whereas in the past, we had a six minute transition between classes. Now we'll have a 10 minute transition between classes, which does in fact allow for students to transition from one class to the next, those first two weeks. And then once we go remote on August 31st in the full remote academy and in the Plan B plus remote for those students, we then have that 10 minute gap in between each block because all of us need a small break before we then go on to the next class. You will notice also a SCL or advisory block. That is brand new, we did not have that in the past. That is not enrichment reinvented. I'm going to repeat, that is not enrichment reinvented. That is not homeroom and that is not any type of flex period or any type of enrichment or intervention block or club time. SCL or advisory time is expected across all of our schools in CMS K through 12. And it is an opportunity for us to engage in community building, college and career discussions, time management, social justice conversations, all things that we know that our students can benefit from, particularly those who have not been engaging in learning since March. I want to repeat, this is not enrichment redone, alright? This is not enrichment reinvented, even though it's after first block, it's not that. There is an attendance expectation and it is a requirement for all students grades nine through 12. Again, you still see that transition. You have second block, third block, fourth block. The schedule that you see, first block, SCL, second, third and fourth is the same time regardless of you are in the Plan B plus remote or if you're in the full remote academy. The only difference now becomes at third block, we have lunch because we got to eat. And so our third block classes for the first two weeks will have lunch based on your buildings. And then when we go to the remote in Plan B plus remote on August 31st and then our students who are in the full remote academy, they will have a standard lunchtime that the students and the staff will all have break time for lunch at the same time, so there won't be students who are remote and then other students that are actually having class while students are in lunch, once we go to full remote. At 1:45, it's dismissal. That's different than it has been in the past, whereas in the past dismissal was at 2:15 PM. Dismissal in the new model, based on information that we've been provided thus far is at 1:45. And it is in fact a staggered dismissal. So what that means is, we will be dismissing students by buildings, very similar to what we do typically on our early release days. And then we will ensure that once all of our students have been dismissed, we will release buses for those students who are bus riders. And then obviously our students who walk or drive or are car riders would be able to leave at the time of the dismissal for their respective building. You learned one thing for sure, this bell schedule is very different than what we did from March to June when we were in a remote fashion. The next slide looks very different as well. Attendance, yes, students, yes, families. During the remote phase, attendance is determined by daily evidence of engagement in the instructional content. Attendance is included but not limited to attending and participating in synchronous instruction. And the next two slides will talk about the differences between asynchronous instruction and synchronous instruction. But it also is inclusive of evidence of that engagement by use of Canvas and submission of assignments, completion of assessments, all those things, which is very different than what it was in the spring. At the high school level, attendance is monitored daily for each class. Teachers will in fact input that attendance in Power School as we typically do. And if we have a student who is not engaging in learning, that's an unexcused absence. And when you have that unexcused absence, just like we normally would during the school year, you have to have that documentation to shift that unexcused absence to an excused absence. But regardless, an absence is an absence and that's not what you want. It's also important to know that once you in fact have hit five or more days, then based on the reports that we can run from Canvas, based on the Student Activity Dashboard, that is when we as our administrative leadership team, along with our student success team, which includes our APs and deans and school counselors and social workers, will be working to identify what supports you need, whether it's supplemental or intensive. And then if it gets to the next level, we'll work to identify what wraparound services need to be provided to the student and the family. As we talk about instructional expectations, we know there's two buzzwords that are just floating all over the country right now. Synchronous learning and asynchronous learning. So last semester, when we were in school from March to June, when you were at home and we were planning for instruction, we know that that was an asynchronous model, which means that students had the flexibility to complete those assignments at their own pace. It was very self-guided. Our teachers here at South Meck would post assignments on Sundays. Students would turn them in by Thursday. Then those teachers would grade them and then we would just repeat that cycle every single week. My email would blow up when teachers didn't post, or my email would blow up when teachers didn't engage. And we know that that was just a hot mess. And so what we are working to do across the district is to ensure that we have a blend between the synchronous learning and the asynchronous learning. Such that each of our blocks will be between 70 to 75 minutes. And of those 70 to 75 minutes, students are expected to engage in live, real-time instruction from their teacher and their classmates at least 40 of those minutes. So what that means is, first block starts at 7:15. Students need to be enrolled in that class online at 7:15 because that teacher's checking attendance. And it's expected that they are in fact engaging in learning and interacting with their teacher and their classmate in that synchronous learning model. So again, that's very different than it was in the spring. So we have a blend of synchronous learning and asynchronous learning. And we realize and understand that based on this model, we will have to have opportunities for tutoring to be embedded within those learning blocks such that of that 70 to 75 minutes, 40 minutes of that would truly be synchronous, which then provides the remaining minutes to be asynchronous, which could in fact include some self-guided or independent lessons, which also could be opportunities for tutoring or remediation. So again, that slide is new and it looks and sounds different. And it's important for our students and families to know that that's really how life will operate going into the upcoming school year. So next is another chart. Again, we want to be sure that we provide visuals, that we're just not talking, that we provide you with visuals. I see some people taking photos, that's perfect because you want to be sure that you have a chance to reference this material. So as you look at the two models, you want to be sure that you understand that regardless of the class that your student is enrolled in, we at South Meck, I cannot promise this is the same for other schools, but we at South Meck are ensuring that all of our classes will be available in the full remote model and the Plan B remote model. So all of our classes, that does include health and physical education, that includes orchestra, that includes band, that includes ROTC, that includes automotive three honors, that includes German four, that includes Spanish seven. All of our classes, regardless if it is a four by four semester class or an eight day, B day, year-long class, those classes are available in Plan B plus remote and the full remote academy. How is that possible, Mr. Starnes? It's possible because at first block at 7:15 AM, if a student has AP physics, then if they are in Plan B plus remote, then those students will log on after August 31st and engage in learning in the AP physics class at the same time when the full remote academy students will log on to that AP physics class and they will engage in learning with the same teacher at the same time who has always been planning to teach that AP physics class. We at South Meck will not be assigning our students to other teachers from other schools, nor will be putting to our students on NCVPS classes, nor will be using edgenuity for those classes. Again, we want to be sure that our students have limited impact and disruption as a result of a remote experience. Therefore, we are using the district resources that have been created by district specialists and our master teachers, some of which are South Meck teachers, to ensure that all of our classes are available in the Plan B plus remote and the full remote academy. Yes, again, that does include our world language magnet classes, our CTE classes, our arts classes, our theater classes. All of our classes are available to be taught remote. And a number of our teachers have helped to assist the district in creating those. About 30 minutes ago, we saw an email from our apparel teacher who is working to create, how can I be sewing at home in a remote fashion and teach my students apparel while they are in fact at home in their environment? She's one of the teachers that's helping to create that for all apparel teachers across our district. So kudos to our teachers who have been a part of that process and helping the district do that, do that for other teachers. We also know and realize that in both models, our daily attendance expectations are the same. We are still having a blend of synchronous and asynchronous learning. We are still using Canvas as the mandatory platform. There's no more Google Classroom that we're using, no more Schoology that we're using. All classrooms across CMS are expected to use Canvas. And we at South Meck will ensure that that happens for sure for our teachers. If your student in fact has an IP or a 504 plan or an EL plan, then those services will in fact be implemented even from a remote perspective. Again, grading and assessment, students will be graded and those grades apply in both models. The only differences are though, should a decision be made by the Board of Education to adjust from Plan B plus remote to go to Plan B or from Plan B plus remote to go to Plan A, and you got to shift with that plan. And the differences are, there are no social interactions for students that are in the full remote academy during those first two weeks for orientation. The differences are, you are in fact at home in a full remote model starting on the first day of school. So those are really the two differences. If someone says, Mr. Starnes, what's the difference? Just tell me quick elevator. So those are really the two differences. If someone says, Mr. Starnes, what's the difference? Just tell me quick elevator speech. Plan B plus remote students come to school for orientation the first two weeks of school. Full remote academy students don't. Instruction, attendance, specialized services, grading, everything else is the same. It's important to know and remember, our N C V P S classes are no longer used here at South MEK. We are not using Edgenuity classes during the school day here at South MEK, except for our students who are on an occupational course of study track. Those students will continue to use N C V P S courses because that in fact is their curriculum. Hope this slide is helpful and provides clarity for a number of questions that you may have. So what is Canvas? We get that question sometimes. Canvas is the platform that you, very similar to Blackboard. If you have a child who may be in college or an older student, Blackboard is where you simply log on at the collegiate level and you complete your coursework there, where you can have your professor actually interact with you and post assignments. That's the Blackboard for high school. That's what Canvas is. Parents do have an opportunity to download the app regardless of the service provider that you have, and you can engage in two-way conversations with that teacher. You can see what assignments are available, when they're due. You can see if your child did them. You can see the grade they received. You can get an automatic email update by way of notifications. That is really the platform that is most user-friendly that our district has used and will be continuing to use as a mandatory platform moving forward. When we do our back-to-school mailer, we will include information on Canvas as to how you can download the app and any pass codes that you need to access that. We will be sure that that is provided to you in our back-to-school mailer, which will go out on August the seventh, and you should receive around August the eighth, no later than August the tenth or eleven. So we talked a lot about instruction. Now let's really talk about a number of the other questions that you may have as we think about the health and safety of our students and our staff. And so we ask that you in fact, at your leisure, have an opportunity to go and review the document that's called Lighting Our Way Forward. We will post that in the chat feature now, so that you will have an opportunity to simply click on that link and know where to find that. But the Lighting Our Way Forward document is simply a document that has been provided by the N C Department of Public Instruction, which provides guidance to schools and school districts on how we in fact should open school and the priorities for around health and safety of students. And so what we have done is we provided you with the brief list. This is not every single detail, but it is a brief list of those hot topics that are important that you know. And so first, we will in fact have one-way hallways and one-way buildings. That is extremely critical that you know that all of our buildings on our campus will have one entrance and one exit. Very similar if you are a family or a family member or parent that has gone to some places. The grocery store has them. Target has them. Harris Teeter has them. And so we as well will have one-way hallways and buildings. We also will have grab-and-go lunch and grab-and-go breakfast. So no, we will not be eating breakfast and lunch in the cafeteria. Per the Lighting Our Way Forward document, you in fact will notice that they do indicate that students are expected to eat lunch and breakfast in their classrooms. We know that that's a challenge for high school students, and so we are working to ensure that we receive clarity as a district around the Lighting Our Way Forward document as is applicable to high schools, such that if we can receive flexibility for students to eat their breakfast or lunch outside in the courtyard. We know we have two courtyard areas here at South. So can students sit outside at the courtyards and eat? Or if we maintain social distancing in our cafeterias, can we do that? We don't have any of those clearances yet, but we are in fact working to be able to do that because we believe as educators, as a former teacher, we believe that our teachers need an opportunity to have that break and not have their high school students eat their lunch with them in their classroom. So we're working on that, and hopefully we can get some clarity. We also know that we will not have more than sixteen students in a class at a given time because again, we have our students in a third, a third, a third. So we have thirty-four hundred, I think thirty-four hundred ten or thirty-four hundred forty students expected to attend South MEK next year. That's about two hundred more students than we had last year. And because of that, our students are a third, a third, a third, and we will not have more than sixteen students in any class at any given time. In addition to on a school bus, for those students who ride a school bus, we will not have more than twenty-four students per bus at a given time. Restroom breaks are critical. We have to be sure that we provide opportunities for our students to use the restroom throughout the day. Those will be scheduled restroom breaks during class. Students will have to ask their teacher to use the restroom during class. We will not permit students to use the restroom between classes during that transition time. That's the same across all of our high schools in CMS. And we will have an expectation that all of our staff members and our students wear a cloth face covering at all times while on our campus. That is going to be critical, and you will also be able to see that in our Lighting Our Way Forward document. The reality is we lead from a very transparent perspective around here at South MEK, and we know that the next two areas, particularly the first room, was a challenge for us last school year. And so as we think about the daily cleaning of our restrooms and our campus buildings, particularly our bathrooms having the necessary supplies, we heard our students and our student council loud and clear. We saw all their photos on social media, and we know that that was a challenge for us. And so we have worked very hard with our custodial team. We have worked very hard with our administrators who provide support to our custodial team, who in fact have created a daily cleaning schedule, very similar to when you go to a restaurant. You look on the back door. There's a sign-off and a checklist that said this restroom was last checked by and what time. We'll have that exact same concept, and we in fact have created a duty schedule where every single restroom on our campus will be checked at every single block or every single class by a staff person to determine if in fact they need to be restocked or cleaned for the students or the staff who are looking forward to using them. We also know that we'll have ongoing and routine classroom cleaning and disinfecting. At the conclusion of every single class, each class student desk will be wiped down. Our high-touch areas will be wiped down. Any instructional materials that are used as well will be wiped down and disinfected. We talked about the staggered dismissal at the end of the day, so in comparison to previous years, where at two fifteen, bell rings, we go home. We in fact at one forty-five will have a staggered dismissal, such A building will release or A and B will release, then C or then D. It'll be a very strategic format. We talked about the increased class time, increased time between classes, excuse me. And then last but not least, those hand sanitizer stations, which are going to be critical. We will have them at the entrances of all of our buildings based on that one-way entrance model. And each of our classrooms will have a hand sanitizer station at the entrance of those classrooms as well. So now is when we begin to engage you with your questions. We know that we have worked extremely hard to provide you as much information as we can, but I know for sure that you have some questions, and we want you to ask those questions by visiting the bit.ly link, which is now in your chat. If you simply click on that link, it will take you directly to our question form. The reason we have shifted from a unmute yourself and ask the question here model to a list your question in this form is because we in fact will be creating a frequently asked question document. And so in an effort to truly capture your question, because someone else may have the same question in another session, then we'll be capturing those questions that are frequently asked and sharing those tomorrow as well. So today, you don't want to list your question in a chat feature, and you also don't want to unmute yourself and ask it. Once you begin rolling those questions in, and I'm asking you to start rolling them, we have staff members here who are listening, who are reading those questions, who will call them off, and I will work now to begin entering them.
Will the full remote academy students keep the same teacher regardless of whether the Plan B plus students go back to the physical classroom?
Yes, the full remote academy students will maintain their same teacher regardless of if the Plan B plus remote students transition to Plan B or transition to Plan A. So what does that look like? What that means is, for example, and I've been using the date October thirty-first as my example over the course of each session, not because I believe that that's when things are going to shift, but that's just the date that I've been using. If, for example, the school board, the CMS Board of Education makes a decision that schools will go back to a Plan B or Plan A on October thirty-first, then students in the full remote academy will still have the same teacher at the same time. However, the difference will now be the students who are in the full remote academy will zoom into that class, or they will Google Meet into that class, or they will Canvas Live into that class for whatever platform we will be using as a school and as a school district. So yes, the students will still have their same teacher, their same block, their same classmates as they may have had prior to a decision. Should our school board make a different decision?
Will we hear from transportation confirming our bus schedule?
All students, and there's a slide coming up. We can show that slide real quick. On the bottom of this slide, it shares with you two slides from now that yes, beginning on August the eighth, our students will have an opportunity to see their student's schedule and what rotation they're assigned to by logging into Power School and seeing that. And we also will have our back-to-school mailer, which will be mailed from South MEK on August the seventh. You should begin receiving based on where you live in our area as early as August the eighth, but no later than probably August the eleventh. And that back-to-school mailer will include your student's schedule, the rotation you're assigned to. It also will include your transportation information, your student I D card, and other information that we believe is important for the school year. While questions are coming in, I do want to also acknowledge that you want to be sure that your phone number and your email is in fact correct with our school and Power School because all the information that you will be receiving will be coming directly from Power School, not our parent listserv emails that you may have opted into at some point along your journey as a South MEK parent. So if you have a question about your address, phone number, email, don't hesitate to contact our registrar because the school district and our school will only have access to the Power School information.
What if a student has to go to the doctor or another appointment during the remote learning?
So just like we would do during the school year, if a student has a doctor's appointment, if a student has an orthodontist appointment, or if a student gets sick, that it is important that we in fact have that documentation that demonstrates that yes, this student was in fact sick, or yes, this student had a doctor's appointment, or yes, this student had an appointment, and that we submit that to our attendance secretary, such that that unexcused absence at that time can then be shifted to an excused absence.
Will masks be provided to students in case students forget to bring one or don't have access to a mask?
So we will in fact have masks on hand provided from CMS for students who do not have access to masks and/or students who forget a mask, because it is an expectation that all of our students and our staff wear a mask each day.
Will parents be contacted if a child is not logging in or misses a class?
So before I answer that question, I'm going to go back to the mask question. So we have been intentional in ensuring that the conversation around masks as cloth face coverings, because we don't want to ensure that no one doesn't understand that you have to wear a mask. The expectation is that you have a cloth face covering, which could be a mask, but we want to be sure that cloth face covering is truly the language that we use. I just wanted to go back to that. Will parents be contacted should a student not enroll, or will parents be contacted should a student not engage in learning? So there's two answers to that. A, parents do have an opportunity to log in into Canvas and see all the information real time. So the first level of ownership that we have is going to be placed on the parent because the parent has the opportunity to see firsthand when their child is and when their child is not. However, we as a staff will do just as we would during the school year of providing those regular updates to students and families whenever their child is not engaging.
If a student takes P E in the ninth grade, will they receive credit for it and not need to take it in the tenth grade even though it is remote?
Very good question. So all of our classes that are offered inclusive of health and P E come with the full credit. So a student's transcript will not show that this class was taught remote or this class was taught face-to-face. The course will look the exact same. So colleges and universities will not be able to see any differences. In addition to our school counselors, we all know and understand that it's the same course. So if a student takes any class, health and physical education included, as a remote course, and they successfully pass and complete that course, they do not have to take that class again in a future year just because the class was remote. Courses that are taught remotely are full courses, just as if they were taught face-to-face.
Some students will have more responsibilities when they are required to stay home. What are you doing to make sure that everything is accessible to students who may have other things going on at home other than school? For example, having to watch younger siblings while parents work?
And so the real reality is we know that this has been a very uncomfortable time and season for all of us. And each of the calls typically I have a small caveat that says, when I accepted this job a year ago, I did not sign up to be a virtual school principal at South Mecklenburg High School. Our teachers did not sign up to be virtual school teachers. So it is hard. I'm going to just be honest with you. We are building this plane as we go because it's very different than being in school face-to-face. And so we do know and we realize that a number of our students and our staff have competing areas that will take their time away from school or from teaching. And so as we think about the blended model of the synchronous and the asynchronous model, those seventy to seventy-five minutes do provide opportunities where at least forty of those, the student has to be logged in. And then the remaining time, it gives those students those opportunities to then have that self-paced or self-guided or independent work, such that then they'll have an opportunity to attend to those competing factors, which could include providing support or oversight for a younger sibling, or it could include any other area that is just a true reality of where we are in the world, in life.
Is there any indication that the district will move to either a full Plan B or return to Plan A in twenty twenty or even before the end of the school year?
So unfortunately, I don't have the answer as to when the CMS Board of Education plans to develop a metrics, nor do I have a plan, a decision or information rather, as to when and if they'll make a decision to shift from Plan B plus remote to Plan B or Plan A. What I have been doing, and I encourage all of our families to do the same, is to watch every single CMS Board of Education meeting, even the ones that are six hours long, just to be sure that you have an update as to really what's happening in their world and hear kind of what some of their next steps are. Because for me, that's really the only way that I know firsthand what's happening. And so I would A, would encourage families to do that if you're interested. And then B, I also have been keeping my ear to the ground just to see what other large districts and some of our surrounding districts are doing. Because I think oftentimes, and I'll use Coca-Cola and Pepsi, for example. If Pepsi comes out with a new product, Coke comes out with a new product. And so not to say that just because Wake County did something, CMS would do something. But I do think it's important that we know what our competing districts are doing because oftentimes, one decision could have an impact on another person's decision.
What have you done to ensure consistent Wi-Fi from the classroom? When and if you have to stream live to avoid the video or instruction from freezing?
So we have not done anything. That's not true. We have. We have in fact had some opportunities where our Wi-Fi connectivity has been upgraded in a couple buildings. We know, I don't remember the exact buildings off the top of my head. I'm looking at our team here who may remember. But I do know for sure that there have been two times that we've had technology team members on site that have had some updates to our Wi-Fi. And we've added some network connectivity boxes to certain places on campus. One of them, just being honest, inclusive of the fieldhouse, right? Who would have ever thought we'd have internet Wi-Fi at the fieldhouse? And so I do remember that that has been added. And so I do not believe, as I think about all the challenges and concerns that we may have going into the upcoming year, I do not believe that that access to Wi-Fi and connectivity for online classes on site or zooming in would be a challenge for us.
What happens if a student fails a wellness check, particularly one who has arrived on campus via the box?
Very good question. And so as a reminder, all of our students and staff are expected to have wellness checks every day. Per the Lighting Our Way Forward document, we are then expected to have a wellness room or there's various terminologies that exist or a location on our campus where individuals, particularly by way of students, are expected to either contact a parent and/or be hailed. Um be hailed um until a parent comes to pick them up or provides permission for them to go home. Because unfortunately, that student or that staff person, if in fact they um for lack of better words, and I don't like to use this terminology, but fail the wellness check. They in fact are not then permitted um to assimilate themselves in our classes or report to first block class or remain onsite. Um as a staff person that day. The Lighting Our Way Forward document, along with the CMS Return to Work Guide, is very explicit. As the number of days that a student or staff person must remain offsite. Um away from school in the event that um that situation does happen. What I do ask though is that in the event that we know we have a student by way of your student or in your family. That potentially has some symptoms um that are listed in all the documents that we see. Um that we just don't come to school um in an effort to ensure um that we all remain safe and we all remain well. Um that we just work extremely hard to ensure that we keep each other safe and each other well um in that particular experience. Hope that answers that question.
Will there be detailed maps for freshmen who are unfamiliar with the campus? Since they won't have an opportunity for a walk through this year?
Very good question. So I was waiting on a new uh ninth grade parent to ask a question. Um so good question. We will not have a face-to-face freshman orientation this year. Our team is working on a Sabre University model. They're similar to what we did last year. And that will all be virtual. So our freshman orientation will be virtual, our open house will be virtual, our meet the teacher will be virtual. And as a part of those virtual opportunities, there'll be a chance for students to see our campus um and learn our campus. While at the same time, we will have staff and maps available to ensure that our students are able to. Very quickly and um efficiently make their way on our campus without feeling lost. It's also important to note that we at South Meck do value our rising ninth graders and our students who are new to us. So that if in fact you do want a chance as a rising ninth grader to visit our campus. Um and ensure that you can navigate our campus prior to August the seventeen. Um then simply email us and we can arrange an opportunity to have that conversation with you. Um for a one-on-one or a one-off um visit to our campus prior.
Will there be an opportunity to choose a different class prior to August seventeenth? If my child decides they do not want to do band online?
Very good question. And so based on the course requests that have been received um in the spring, when our students sat and met with their school counselors. Those are the courses which have in fact populated into our student schedules. When students receive opportunities to see their schedules on August the eighth in Power School. And students receive their back to school mailer, it has that same schedule in it. There will in fact be a link which a class change process will be very clearly outlined. That class change process will only have a seventy-two hour window. For students to make requests, to make adjustments to their class schedule, should in fact they find the need to. They'll have very um strict guidelines, just as we always have. Um however, we will work to ensure um that our students are in the proper places. Keeping in mind that all of us are experiencing COVID-19 at the same time. And so we understand that some students may have some challenges taking orchestra or band. Or those hands-on type of courses or those audition type of courses um in a remote environment. But again, it will only be a seventy-two hour window um that students and families will have, and we'll be sure to include that um in the information that we send out.
What criteria need to be met in order for the school district to move back to either Plan B or Plan A? I.e. um in-person instruction?
So unfortunately, I don't have that answer. Um I have been tuning into each of the school board meetings, but I do not know. Um what decision points the school board, along with the senior leadership in CMS, will be using. To determine if we shift from Plan B plus remote to any other plan. I apologize for that. I don't have that information.
If on Plan B, will a student attend class virtually while they are not physically on campus?
Repeat that, I'm sorry.
If on Plan B, will its student attend class virtually while not physically on campus?
So if your student is in Plan B plus remote, if they are in group A, group B, and group C, those first ten days that we broken up to attend school in one of those three groups. For example, if you are group C under Plan B plus remote. It's extremely important to note that you only come to school those three days which are listed for group C. Which means that on those other seven days, you are in fact home. The same thing applies for students in group A. They only come the first three days. They're absent or not in school rather. Um the next seven days, they're not counted absent unless they don't engage, but again, they are not present on campus. And then group B students do not come the first three, and they don't come the last three. Um so depending upon your group determines when you come, while at the same time, you will have an expectation to engage in very learning opportunities. Um while you are not on campus throughout those first two weeks.
If we want to consider the full remote academy for the second half of the year. Will there be an opportunity to register for it in that timeframe, or do we have to register for it by July twenty-sixth as well?
So there is an opportunity, if you do not register for the full remote academy for the first semester. There will be an open window in which if you are in Plan B plus remote. You will then have an opportunity to opt into the full remote academy at the conclusion of the first semester for the second semester.
Let's assume CMS moves to Plan B. Plan B will be divided into student groups of three. Teachers will be teaching pretty much the same content to each group live as they come to school. What does FRA do at this time? Do they zoom into the class that is being repeated for the person, for the in-person classes? And what do home groups do in Plan B that are not in school?
So that really is a two-part question. Um and so should CMS make a decision to shift from Plan B plus remote to. Plan B or to Plan A? And just for clarity purposes, in case you are a family who don't know what Plan B or Plan A might include. The state has outlined Plan A, meaning all students, one hundred percent of your students, attend school all day, every day. With no social distancing and no mask or no facial coverings. Plan B includes students will attend school at no more than fifty percent capacity. With minimal social distancing and minimal precautions. And Plan C, per the state, is where all of your students are remote with no opportunities for face-to-face learning. And so our school board and CMS made a decision to have a Plan B plus remote. Which means that we will have Plan B, we have some students who come to school, and then we have some students who can be remote. And so per the question, should there be a decision for CMS to then shift to a Plan B or Plan A? Then those students who are full remote academy will yes, zoom into classes. But it is important to know that while we, if in fact we go to a Plan B or Plan A. There in fact will be learning that's happening on a daily basis. And those students will be expected even when they are at home, if they are say in Plan B and Plan A is here at school. Then they will still be expected to engage in learning while at home, so that it's not the teacher teaching the same content three times. That is not the expectation that the teacher then recycle their lessons every three weeks um for students in each of those rotations. We know and realize though, in some lab classes, particularly in the sciences. If in fact the school district makes that decision, then there potentially could be an opportunity for. When you come on campus to have a lab on this day, and then the next group has a lab on that day. Um however, that's as we think about that first visual. Um we don't know if the school board was making those decisions and we um. My best gut doesn't tell me that that decision will be made anytime soon. And so as we think about what world, what life will look like, uh our plan is the best plan that we've modeled so far.
Is there any chance the Plan B option could change from one week in-person to two weeks remote to an A-day, B-day alternating option?
So I don't have any information as to um where the heads of our CMS Board of Education may be as they think about what they could shift. Plan B plus remote to. Unfortunately, I don't have that information. What I do know is our Plan B plus remote currently. Is inclusive of our A-day, B-day classes, which means that on August the seventeenth is A-day, August the eighteenth is B-day. And we will continue to follow as we typically would throughout the entire year.
Will students be given Chromebooks?
So all of our students should still have their Chromebook from last year. The only Chromebooks that we select, that we collected are Chromebooks for graduating seniors and Chromebooks from students who are leaving CMS. If there in fact is a student who turned in their Chromebook on accident. Then of course, we have that Chromebook, we've disinfected those Chromebooks. And we will have a record to show that that student has turned in that Chromebook, such that we will in fact reissue them a Chromebook. The same goes for our students who are new to CMS. We will in fact issue those students a Chromebook as well. In a very similar um curriculum pickup opportunity prior to school starting.
Do you expect to have an assistant principal in place with his last name, F.N.?
I hope to have an assistant principal in place uh yesterday for those uh students in that last name. We have completed interviews. Um for that respective position and a recommendation has been made to resources. We are simply waiting on the HR process to be concluded. And so we do have. Um that process has been completed with the very hopes that that person can be named in the very near future. Every single person in this room with me um would agree that they are all waiting on that person's name to be lifted. So that we can have some shared responsibilities in this work.
Do you have a time schedule broken down by each block and transition time?
So the bell schedule on month, uh what's today, y'all? So yesterday on Wednesday, when we shared, I'm sorry, it's been a long week. I don't remember the day. Yesterday, when we did this presentation, we had a bell schedule broken down by blocks. However, there was an error on that schedule. That error was we did not have a transition period between first block and the SEO block. That was a district-wide area error. Because again, this bell schedule is the same schedule across the district. And so the district leaders are working now to create the new times for the bell schedule and sending them out to schools. And so as soon as we have that information per each block, we will be sure to share that. But in the interim, it's important to note that first block starts at seven fifteen AM. And fourth block ends at two uh at one forty-five PM. Seven fifteen AM, one forty-five PM.
How I'm planning to re-register for bus transportation?
So students who are new to CMS, um when you register for school is when you register for bus transportation. If you are a returning student, then you have always registered, you have already registered for bus transportation. Um if you have a specific question um regarding transportation as a new student, don't hesitate to contact us here at South so that we can answer that question specifically for you. Um but our returning students, that same model applies.
What other precautions are being taken to ensure social distancing in the restrooms? Will the number of people be limited and or monitored?
So we do not have the opportunity to have a staff person in each of our restrooms valet-style. However, we will have an opportunity to have signage on each of our restrooms and limiting the number of individuals that are in restrooms at a given time. So we, I'm sorry. I was gonna say, so we will in fact have signage up, and we are in fact expecting um all of our individuals to be in compliance with those signage. Um the signs that will be placed up on our restrooms. And there's just no way for us to have a staff person. Um at the door of each restroom in between each class in order to ensure. That we don't have more than three or more than four students in a restroom at a given time.
Will students still have the option for college testing such as pre-ACT, ACT, and PSAT during school days and prior years?
So we are waiting information on the national assessments such as PSAT um and ACT. We do not have an answer for that yet. Um and that uh answer is being, you know. Looked at and and we're very well welcomed from all schools, not just here in CMS, but even across the state. I think everyone is waiting on that answer, but we don't have that answer yet. We have a few more minutes for about three more questions. Not sure how many more questions we have.
In a full Plan B scenario, if the synchronous learning session for each fully remote academy class is forty minutes. But classes are seventy to seventy-five minutes, what are students in the classroom during the doing during the extra thirty-five, thirty to thirty-five minutes? Can remote students stay tuned in for the full seventy minutes of class time?
So the model that our school district has employed is a blend of asynchronous and synchronous learning. And so the seventy to seventy-five minutes is inclusive of that forty minutes live time. But the remaining time will be opportunities for students to complete assignments at a self-guided pace or independently. And so obviously, our teachers will be available to students who are in the full remote academy and students who are in Plan B plus remote. Um so it's not a matter of expecting the teacher to be fully engaged in live direct instruction for seventy to seventy-five minutes. And then at the forty-minute time period, students can clock out. It will truly be of those seventy to seventy-five minutes, forty minutes of those are opportunities for. Students and teachers to engage together, while the remaining time will be opportunities for that independent time.
Can you tell us more about how temperature checks will happen in the morning before school? Will they be inside or outside, and how will students socially distance during this time?
So we, our staff worked probably four hours today, maybe five. Four or five hours today um processing through the morning wellness checks um for all of our students and our staff. They walked every inch of this campus to determine where those wellness checks would be and to determine where those stations would be. And so the exact details of where the station will be, who will be doing the um wellness check, we don't have available. What but what we do know is that each of our, we will have various locations on our campus for wellness checks. At the wellness check, there also will be a hand sanitizer station. And at the check, there also will be a staff person um to ensure um that the check was successful. There will be two or three staff persons at the check to ensure that it was successful. So the part, we enjoy this real-time question because the staff who are here can uh obviously. Um give me the answer per their um walk today. Anything else with the temperature checks or the wellness checks in the mornings? And so once we complete the wellness check, there will be a um a band that the student will receive, that will be a different color band for each day. Um that will allow for the classroom teacher, um once that student leaves the wellness check and go to their respective classroom, to know that the student in fact has gone through the wellness check. And in fact can participate in instruction and campus for that day. We do know that for sure. There are other details that we're working through. If the wellness checks are inside or out. The wellness checks will in fact be outside underneath uh covered areas to ensure that in the event of inclement weather, our staff and our students are not. Um exposing themselves to that inclement weather. And I think that's. Think that's all I know so far, or all we um are able to share so far. Um because our full team hasn't had an opportunity to vet all the information, and I'm learning right here on the spot um based on what they've shared today. Because I've been in in town hall meetings all day today. So I hope that answered that question. Yes, we will have temperature checks, what we're calling wellness checks. Um each morning, um those students will in fact and staff have a wristband that they receive. Um those wristbands will be worn all day long. It'll be a different color wristband um each day of throughout that rotation. Um students who are not successful in those wellness checks will have an opportunity to contact the parent to be um picked up for the day. Or taken to a location on our campus while we await a parent. And again, we will have staff members at that respective check area. I hope that answers that question.
If you're in a year-long class such as an AP class, how will the transition work if you are fully remote first semester? Then decide to go back to Plan B plus or even Plan A if that happens second semester?
So again, if a student, regardless of the course, if they are enrolled in the full remote academy and the. Um district shifts from Plan B plus remote to Plan B or from Plan B plus remote to Plan A. Then those students would zoom in to the class if in fact there are students and teachers that are onsite here at South receiving instruction. So that again, students, if they're in year-long classes, say if it's February and we are now in a Plan A. Then students who are in the full remote academy who opted to stay in the full remote academy after the first semester point. Will zoom into those classes and receive their instruction um just as you would um if you were in a remote, if if we all were still in a remote fashion.
Will students who stay home due to symptoms be excused without a COVID test?
So I don't remember off the top of my head what the guidance said as to if students who um have symptoms, if they will have an excused absence with. If they would have an excused absence without a COVID test. I've read so many things last night because there was new guidance that came from our district. So I do not recall if that was an excused absence with or excuse absence without a COVID test or without a doctor's note. So unfortunately, I don't have that answer right now, I apologize.
Do you anticipate classes with heavier daily content loads can be adequately covered? In the forty minutes of synchronous of the synchronous section? Especially AP classes that must move swiftly to complete all required content?
So I wanna, this is one thing I always enjoy saying, so I value all of our classes here at South Mac. So our traditional biology classes, our honors biology classes and our AP biology classes alike. There is no one in one more important class than the other. It's just the level of rigor that the students receive in each of those classes. And I use biology for example, just because they have the three levels. So there's a traditional biology class, a honors biology class or AP biology class. And so our teachers, our master teachers and our district specialists, they actually have worked extremely hard this summer. To ensure that all the core standards in the curriculum are able to be taught remotely. Based on the blended model of the asynchronous and the synchronous model. And so to be honest with you, as I always would be. Our biology standards are gonna be able to be taught in that time period. Synchronous and asynchronous and our AP biology standards. We know that the rigor is different, oftentimes we think that AP is more important than or AP deserves. A higher level of expectation or that it's better than. But our expectation that all of our classes, AP honors or traditional. Are taught in an equitable fashion for all students in the model in which we have.
Are students who have Chromebooks that are not working able to get them replaced?
Absolutely, any student who has technology needs on the, you can contact us here at the school. We have been replacing Chromebooks all summer. We also have a link that's available on the student Chromebook if there's something that's just wrong with it. Even if it still works where you can contact our technology team and we can provide the necessary technology support. And if it needs to be replaced, then we will absolutely replace.
Has the school wifi technology been upgraded to 5G?
So I don't know that answer, I had to ask somebody earlier if I had an iPhone ten or iPhone eleven. So I I don't know if our our school wifi has been upgraded to 5G or not. But I do know that it works and it works well.
Okay, why is cohort B going for four days? Why the extra day compared to A and C?
So our school district made a decision that there, we had to have one of the groups that will be on three days versus. Two of the groups that will be on three days versus one group on four. Because it's ten days and it's three groups and anytime you divide ten by three, you're gonna get a decimal. And there's no way to break up those days and so that's that's the way it was explained to me and that's the only way that it can, it could have happened. And I, I'm not trying to be funny, I promise you, there, one of the groups would have had to be four days.
Do you need a parking pass?
So no parking passes will be sold for the three days in which our students will be on campus. Once we have a decision from our school board, if we transition to any in-person learning. Then our team will begin making preparations for selling parking permits. Last question.
Many rising ninth graders did not bring Chromebooks in March, can they get one now?
Many, so all of our eighth graders who are at CMS schools, is this correct? Your eighth grade son, your eighth grader kept his Chromebook, right? So we were told and I have a parent of a eighth grader who was at Quell Hollow here in the room. Eighth graders from our feeder schools and eighth graders from across were in fact expected to keep their Chromebooks. Going into the. Spring semester and into the summer, so they should still have that. If in fact that was in their classroom at school, then those middle schools should have had opportunities for those students to retrieve those items. Out of those classrooms, if in fact that is the case. Where your Chromebook as an eight, as a now rising ninth grader is still sitting in your middle school. Then I encourage you to contact your middle school, if you do not have any success, then contact us. That's all the questions that are on the chat feature, guys, I thank you, thank you, thank you, you're the last one for the day. So we did allow for the questions to just continue rolling and rolling and now I am, I'm tired. And so thank you so much for all that you have done to help us help you. These truly are designed to ensure that our families have the information as we have it. Because we know that it is very critical that you have time to make a very solid decision. For your student and for your family prior to the deadline of July the twenty-sixth. Our number one goal are two things, A, to be sure we are safe on campus. And B, ensure that we have high-quality instruction for all of our students. So those are the two things that we want to be sure that we do, we want to continue to engage you in that process, so thank you so much for your assistance. The last question I saw was about fall sports, fall sports are still on hold to at least September the first. Thank you all so much, have a great evening and go Sabres.